Final hearing of the evening is for Woodgrain Millwork. It is Woodgrain Millwork, Inc., on two properties, their entire complex at 300 Northwest 16th Street and 1177 North Pennsylvania Avenue. The hearings are for annexation of the parcel of 1177 North Pennsylvania, a comprehensive plan amendment for 1177 North Pennsylvania from agricultural to heavy industrial, a comprehensive plan amendment for the Northwest 16th Street frontage from general commercial to heavy industrial, a development agreement on the entire complex, a zoning designation for 1177 North Pennsylvania of heavy industrial, a rezone of the Northwest 16th Street frontage from general commercial to heavy industrial, and a variance on employee parking requirements on the entire complex. Anyone here from Woodgrain Millwork? Hey, David, would you like to step up to the ...
Good evening. I'm Dave Eastman. I represent, actually, David Eastman. I represent Woodgrain Millwork located at 300 Northwest 16th Street, Crutland, Idaho, Before we start, does everybody have a map? Perfect, because there's going to be a lot of referring to the map. And as Mr. Watkins stated, we're here for a number of reasons tonight with a number of applications. I think overall, I'm here tonight because Woodgrain is planning a significant investment in its Crutland facilities. And there are several different items where that investment is going to affect the number of buildings we have and the movement of material through our property. And we'll address parking as well, the number of parking spaces that we have as well. I think the easiest thing to do would be to see if anybody has any questions first, based on the development agreement that we've submitted and the applications and the map. Does any of the council have any questions?
I had one.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify, from the information in the packet I got, so the area that's being considered to bring in your raw lumber, offload it, and then put it into one of the storage sheds.
Yes.
That would be accessed off of Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania, yes.
So that would just be for your raw lumber that's coming in, and then your finished product would still be going out on 16th? Is that correct?
That's my understanding. Mark, you want to confirm that?
No, that's correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Okay, well, I think the best thing to do would be to start with what we have already constructed and what is underway, and we'll just work our way around the facility. If we could start in the southeast corner of the facility, and I'm just going to give you a narrative, and feel free to stop and ask me, I don't know if I need to give you a license, but feel free to stop and ask me if you have any questions. On the southeast side, just in off of Pennsylvania, you'll see a pink building, and pink is nice because it means it's either new construction, or it's under construction, or it's proposed construction. So if we can concentrate on the pink, that would help. There's a building that's 45,500 square feet, and that is a lumber shed, and we've already built that. We went through the process with the city and got all the permits, and we've already built that. Adjacent to that is a building for 50,400 square feet, and that represents an addition to our manufacturing facility. And so basically, what we're doing on one of those buildings is doubling the manufacturing floor and capacity. Unfortunately, in building these two buildings, that's where our current employee parking was, and so now we're strapped to go and find a space for our employees to park and access the facilities. And what we're proposing is to, and we'll address several items in this, but up on 16th Street, if you can look down, that's where our proposed parking lot is right now. And the first request that we have with the city is to zone that area from commercial to heavy industrial. And it's basically because we're going to start to use it. Up till now, it's been vacant land, and it's going to be a parking lot, if not something else, in the far future, but we plan on it being a parking lot. We are a heavy industrial facility, and so we'd like to change that from commercial to heavy industrial. In talking with the city, it's my understanding that Tesoro has been working with the city to possibly contribute or donate the land that we call the Tesoro property, and the city had the intention of creating a park or an equestrian facility. Our intention with that land, if the city will so agree, is to use it as a parking lot for Woodgrain and help the city develop the parking lot and foot some of the costs and use it as Woodgrain employee parking during the week, and then have the city use it for whatever facility or whatever activities they want during the weekend. And for that reason, we'd like to hold off on park, I'm sorry, paving this parking lot off of 16th Street. Does anybody have any questions thus far?
On that parking lot, in your development agreement, you talked about accessing it from the existing ingress off of 16th Street.
That's correct, yes.
Where, are you talking about the far west?
That's right, the gravel road, yes.
So there would be some sort of frontage road from that point over to the actual property?
Yes, yes. And we may even move the parking lot or create more parking spaces up to that gravel road. We're still trying to work with grading, and we've had quite a bit of snow covering it up, so we're trying to figure out how we're going to lay it all out. But this is tentative right now.
Okay.
But it will be a parking lot. What we'd like to hold off on is paving it until the city decides what they're going to do with the Tesoro property, and that's why I brought it up.
Okay.
Okay, so employee parking, that's what we're going to address there. Back to the southwest, I'm sorry, southeast corner of the property, we, as it's pretty well-known now, have acquired an acre of land, and we're extending the entrance, or we're requesting to extend that entrance that we've got off of Pennsylvania to basically create a truck turnaround or a truck unloading area where lumber, raw lumber, is brought in, dropped off, and then trucks exit. We intend, just because I know there's a lot of concern with this, we intend on keeping all the city ordinances that are required of us in being a neighbor. And so we will address paving, we will address landscaping, we'll address barrier issues, drainage issues, according to city ordinance, and we fully intend on doing that. Does anybody have any questions on that piece of property? Yes?
I just had one. So I read in the development agreement that, so there would be, you've got it set up because I brought up a long time ago when this first came up, concerns about the people living nearby and, you know, noise and stuff like that. So I remember reading in there, there would be a 7 o'clock, that's when they finish
Absolutely.
loading, unloading any backup alarms for forklifts and stuff like that.
Yep.
How, so if that ends at 7:00 PM, what time would that start in the mornings?
7:00 in the morning.
Okay. So you wouldn't be hearing backup alarms or anything, middle of the night?
No, goodness, no, no.
You might go, they might hear a backup alarm if we go in that lumber shed to get lumber to put into a building. It won't be unloaded, there won't be any trucks coming in at that time, but you may hear a backup alarm from the forklift that's going into the ...
The building that's the pink outline, 45,000 square foot.
Yeah.
And that wouldn't be different from, if we had that acre, or if we didn't have that acre, it would still be the same.
Because you guys have been using that, that particular area, not only for employee parking, but you've been doing lumber unloading there for years and years.
Yep, it predates a lot of us, actually. And so for that reason, we acquired this piece of land, and I'll just give you a little bit of history, as if it's interesting. It was county, it's actually county property, which seems strange to me, but it's county property, it's an island of county property, it's zoned industrial, I'm sorry, zoned agricultural. The city has it as heavy industrial on the comprehensive plan. We've worked with the county and talked to them, just kind of seeing if we should keep it as county property, and then just decided at the end, after talking with the city, that this would just be best to just bring it into our existing footprint and just keep it continuous with our existing operations and the city's comprehensive plan for that area. Does anybody have any questions on that particular parcel?
What is your truck count? How many trucks are you unloading on a daily basis?
Oh, I'll defer to Mark. We know how many trucks come and go, or will come and go. We don't know, we haven't started using it as a truck loading or unloading zone, so.
It depends from day to day, but if you ... It could be up to 14, 15 trucks per day. It could be down to five or six. It depends on how much you bring in what day of the week.
Thank you.
Just so everybody understands, one, we are making a transcribable recording about this, so we would ask that if you keep comments to yourself for now, because we have to be able to record this and transcribe it if we need to, but the public will all get a chance to testify, but you'll be testifying one at a time after all this other testimony takes place and you get a chance. So unfortunately, because of the way Idaho statutes have this set up as actually a judicial proceeding, we can't have the public asking questions or comments during this period, but after the applicant goes, everybody here will get a chance to testify. You can then ask questions. They won't be answered at that time, but they will be noted down, and then either the council can follow up with that, and the applicant will get to speak again and then address your concerns at that time. So, sorry, go ahead.
No, any questions regarding that particular parcel? Okay, no, I guess the last issue is variance for parking. In examining Woodgrain's structure and in comparing it to the city ordinances, we're required to have one parking space for every 1,000 square feet of structure. And in looking at our structure, we really don't have a significant amount of structure that houses people, that has employees, a lot of it's for storage. In fact, it's on, my map has us at 152,000 square feet of storage space. Is that, are we looking at the same map? Our engineers, okay, we're ...
I think so.
Perfect. They come out with a new one every, like, couple of weeks, and so I'm going to make sure it's right. And based on how many employees we have coming and going and needing the parking spaces at one point, we've kind of measured our shifts, it's in the variance application, it shows, we've done a comprehensive study about how many employees we have using our parking at any given point. We've estimated that we need about 400 parking spaces, not, based on our total square footage, ordinance would require us to have 565 parking spaces, but looking at our shift count, it would just be about 400. And we're budgeting right now, and we can always expand a little bit, but we've got planned for 420, I believe, three, between 420 and 425 parking spaces. And so that's why we're requesting the variance, is to not overbuild our parking space to just fill the ordinance that requires us to have a parking space for square footage that we never have occupied by employees anyway. And we understand.
So as discussed at planning and zoning, you're asking to provide parking for the manufacturing space and the front office space, but asking for a variance as to not provide parking just for the gross floor area that's storage space.
That's correct, yes.
And those numbers are okay for those other two?
Yes.
The cinder block wall that you're going to build?
Yes.
This, the map looks like you're just going to do it in this corner, or can you explain what that ...
We've already got one all the way. We've got, we've got one to some extent already. So if you look at beyond this green box, that's already being used for manufacturing. We have trucks coming and going, and, I mean, it's been that way forever. We already have a cinder block wall at that point, up to that, that green space, or more or less. I mean, we'd extend what we have all the way to the road. And the, the one thing I'd like to say with our improvements to Pennsylvania with landscaping, we'd also like to hold off on that just for a little while until the city decides what it wants to do with Pennsylvania. We'd give them a construction easement and, or I'm sorry, construction right of way, but we just want to know where to extend everything to. And so once the city has a plan and understands where boundaries are going to be, then we'll build to that point. Yeah, with the, with the grant that, well, no, the city's probably going to, we're working with State of Idaho to help the city procure a grant for curb and gutter along, I think, 300, or I'm sorry, 16th Street and Pennsylvania. And then we're also working with, oh, it's Treasure Valley Transit, to maybe get some, some bus service as well. Does anybody have any questions from the council?
Not yet with Mike, at the end.
I, yeah.
Nothing more, guys? Thank you, David. Would anyone else like to testify? Yes, sir?
My name is Brian Howell. I live at 100 Northwest 16th Street, space 33. To put that in perspective, the end of the wall that exists is right at the edge of the space that my trailer is in. The back of my trailer is wide open and 20 feet from Woodgrain property. My concerns with planning and zoning were a number, including security, drainage, noise, dust, and we pretty much talked about all of that. And I think you should have those comments in the minutes from the planning and zoning meeting, but there's some new things that I need to talk to you about. Biggest one is noise in their operation of their forklifts. Last night, as an example, they started up forklift, which is normally parked about 30 feet from my bedroom, at 11:50. They then ran it, loaded up a load of wood, and took it into the plant. It was gone about 30 minutes, and it comes back, runs for a few minutes back into the plant for delivering the material. And I understand that is something that they need to have as their material. But as I read city code, even with an H1 of the heavy industrial, noise pollution of that type is to be cut off at 11 o'clock at night, and it's not being. At the planning and zoning meeting, they talked about shutting down the trucks and the heavy equipment at 7 o'clock at night, buried that here tonight. But I think it was the 25th, they started running at least two forklifts at 1 o'clock in the morning and ran until 4:30. I'm one of those people that that kind of noise keeps me awake. I find it very annoying. I moved here because it's a nice town, it's a quiet area, I want to stay here. If this is going to keep up, I can't stay. I've got to move. That's an expense I really can't afford right now. So I'd like to ask the city council, when they get ready to make their action on this, to consider some things. One, the forklifts that we're running last night and that I've seen running, and last night was just an example, they do this almost every night, they don't have backup alarms on them. Now, that may seem like a good thing, because that's something that's not going to keep us awake, but it's a violation of OSHA safety rules. And if they bypass them or turn them off for some way or other, they're disregarding that safety rule, and it's there for a very good reason. Second, they're running outside city ordinance right now, according to what I read in the ordinance, and they don't seem to have a problem with that. And I understand they have to get their material out to the plant, and I want them to be able to do that. But I also understand that I can tell you how much, if given the opportunity, I can figure out how much they need for any particular operation starting today. And it can be done anytime during the day and put there, so that it's not being run late at night. Now, there's several elderly people that live right along the property line, and I'm sure that I'm not the only one that this is bothering. So I'd like to see some things done. I'd like to see the wall completed, the buffering done with the plants and the trees. I'd like to see them make sure that we're not going to have a runoff problem, because we are dealing with mobile homes. And mobile homes, once they settle, you're talking about $5,000, $6,000 to re-level them so that the doors close and the walls aren't cracked. I don't want that to happen. I'd like to see all of this done before you grant these requests from Woodgrain. I don't have confidence that Woodgrain will follow through with those requests in a timely manner unless they're held, their feet held on fire by the city council. But I have filed a police report on the night where they were operating from 1 until 4:30. I have a copy of what I reported and the report number. Chief is aware of it. We've discussed this. So I think that, my reason for being here is to ask you to consider the fact that there's 120 homes in Desert Rose. And their operation, the way they're doing it right now, is going to disturb a lot of those. I'll be the first one to admit that if I moved in next to the plant and their manufacturing bothered me, I'd say, my fault. It's like moving in next to an airport and complaining about the airplanes, okay? But this is something that wasn't there when I moved in, and it's something that can be remedied by taking proper steps. Thank you very much for your time. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you, Brian. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Carrie Peterson. I live at 205 Magnolia. It's in the Serenka Springs neighborhood, it's just down the road from the Pennsylvania. And I'm just here as a ...
Excuse me, your last name again?
Peterson.
Peterson, okay.
S-O-N.
Okay, thank you.
Some of my biggest concerns that I wanted to address today come mostly, we, I have a young family, most of my neighbors are young families, most of the families that live around Mesa Park are young families. That's why I was late today, because my daughter was finishing up soccer practice at Mesa Park. So we, we have a lot of experience in this area. So I want to address, first of all, the 7 to 7 he was talking about. And living in that area, actually, 7 to 7 is a really busy time for us. 7 is when the buses come through, 7 o'clock is when the kids are walking to the stop, and 7 o'clock is when we're getting out of our soccer games, tennis matches, baseball games. So I only can go by our experience and just thinking about when they moved into their new facility, the trucks were moving the material into that new storage compartment, new storage shed that they did, it was, it was very difficult to maneuver. And I can only imagine, because they would have to come around the corner, and that corner is really narrow still, and then they would have to stop, and, and I liked how he said it, that right now it's five to 14 trucks possibly a day, but that's at their current capacity. And from what I heard today, it sounds like they are going to expand that. So I can only imagine the five to 14 is their current capacity, and it's just going to increase. That road is very, very, very narrow as it is. So when I look at, and I, I did not go to the planning and zoning, but it would be really nice if we could hear if they had looked at possibly going out Whitley a different way, or if there is something else that we can avoid on Pennsylvania. It's one road, and most of that road is all families and people who went to that side of town because Mesa Park was right there. And my daughter asked me today, she's 11, "Hey, Mom, can I ride my bike to Mesa Park?" And there's not sidewalks, one, first of all. And then if we add, you know, 40 trucks down that road, there's no way that we could use that park facility. And that's the only one we have in the city right now. I know in plans there's to develop others in the future, and we're looking at things like that, but right now Mesa Park is all we have, and it's for the whole county, and people come from all over to play in that park. And even though, maybe there'll be beautification from what I'm hearing, there may be some trees and curb and gutting going in, maybe, but I can't, I can't see a positive right now. I appreciate Woodgrain because they bring in a lot of jobs, but I know that it would, it would, I think it would devastate us over in that area that live there and that use Mesa Park to come in with the extra noise and the extra trucks, especially with our families. And we, our property values would go down, and it would be, it would be very difficult. So I would really see if we could really look at if they could go a different way out Whitley or stay on 16th, use the tracks more, I'm not sure, but just from our experience with my family, that 7 to 7 is rough, and adding those extra trucks, there's no way our, my kids could use the Mesa Park or that street at all. That's what I have.
Any questions for Mrs. Peterson? Thank you, Carrie.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Can we do that way?
All right, here's your cam. Yeah, sure.
My name is Sharon Purdom, and I live at Desert Rose Estates, number 36, right in front of your pink building. When I moved in in 1989 in my mobile home there, that was a cornfield, and I've gone through the cornfield and the parking lot, and now I have the building. I know progress has to occur. I have one concern about noise, and maybe it was just something that would only happen once in their life that they did, and I can't tell you when, but it was before the pink building went in. They had your storage vans, freezer vans, whatever you want to call those, steel buildings, storage things, and they would stack those empty, I guess they got stuff out somewhere, and they'd bring them over near space 33, 34 on 36, and stack them. And when those are empty and a forklift is moving them, they sound like you're in the midst of a terrible thunderstorm. They did it at 2 and 3 in the morning, not during the day. My bedroom, I measured, my bedroom is 23, 22 and 1/2 feet from the wall, I have the wall. But they would move those, and I could tell they, what was happening and where, because I could see the lights of the forklift. And of course, I couldn't see the storage vans, but the next day I could see them stacked up, and it was like that was the only time they could stack them. My concern is, if, maybe that was only one time, a special, you know, couple of weeks, a month, I don't remember when, how long it was, but how many more emergencies might they have and have to do it at 2 and 3 in the morning? I don't sleep in my bedroom anymore, and even from the living room, it's extremely loud, but I'm retired and I can sleep during the day too, but not everybody has a schedule like mine. And that's my very high concern about noise, unusual noise.
Okay, any questions to Mrs. Purdom?
Is there a wall between the building and you now, or is there anything there?
I have the block wall.
Okay.
Of course, it's not that high, you know, you can see over it. But, well, if I stand up on my side, I can't see over it, but yes, there is a block wall, but where they were working, it was at a diagonal, and it wouldn't have mattered if you had a wall going halfway up the sky. Those ...
No, I understand.
Steel buildings, yeah.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, Mrs. Purdom. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I live at 301 Northwest 16th, right across from their office. I guess my concern is parking. If they're going to build it along 16th, if they're going to have a designated smoking section for parking, I know it sounds trivial, but they can't smoke on their property, so they park in front of my house all night to smoke. They're there at 10 o'clock, they're there at 3 o'clock, they're there all the time. And in the summer, it's not quite so bad, because they can shut their vehicles off, but most generally, they don't. They sit there and rev the motors up. In the wintertime, they leave them run. Lately, they've been parking in the office parking, which I'm sure they're not supposed to be, but they ... to be, but they back right up to that Arbor Vita hedge, which, it's not my house, but it's a trailer house, and rev their motors up all night long. And if they're going to put parking in, they don't want to pave it, I understand. Just opens up the question is, why not quite pave it? Because they're going to build more on that end, need more parking that they're not going to have, because they're going to build something bigger. That's my concern. I don't own the place. I'm here representing Mary Ann Miller, that owns that hayfield and the little white and greenhouse right across the office. But, I don't want them parking in my yard to smoke cigarettes at night, all night. Tired of it. I haven't called the sheriff's department, but I'm about ready to. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Freitas? Thanks, Rod. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name's Clyde Warner. I live at 100 Northwest 16th Street, number 34.
What was your first name again?
Clyde Warner.
Right, okay.
My trailer is right between Sharon's and the other place. That wall, you know, it might be a 10-foot wall, but not to them. It's, when they built that building, the buildings up there were down here. So that 10-foot wall isn't up there for them. To me, it's something to keep the dirt back. I just moved here from Napa to get away from all the ceiling and everything, and we figured this would be a good town to start in. When we first bought our trailer, we installed Woodgrain Works with everything, and they were building that building at the time. But, I'm a very, very light sleeper. And at night, I hear that, then bells goes off. My wife knows I get up all the time at night, because I can't, I'm a very light sleeper. If they're going to use that space behind there, to me, it's got to be paved. I have emphysema, and the dust, it kills me. I've been in the logging business all my life, and I know these are things that they need to do. But I've seen the pros and cons of it at the same time.
Okay. Any questions to Mr. Warner? Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My concern is for my mom.
An address, please.
Yeah. Robert H-O-F-F-E-R Hofer, 100 Northwest 16th Street, trailer 31, Fruitland, Idaho, 83619. My concern is for my mom. Not necessarily for me, because I can handle pretty much. I used to work at Woodgrain. I thought Woodgrain was an awesome place to work. I know how they operate. I used to do the wood chipper and clean up and whatnot. But, my concern is for my mom. My mom has congenital heart disease, and very, very bad asthma, the worst you could possibly get as a human being. My concern is, is two things. Yeah, the noise. She has very, very bad hearing, I mean, her, just a whistle would send her to the moon. She'd just freak her out over that. The dust, she steps outside to, you know, whatever, let the dogs out to go potty or whatnot, the dust just chokes her half to death. She comes in and immediately she has to get her oxygen, or she's going to have to call Another thing was, is I don't understand why this wasn't addressed, or anybody, nobody brought it up, or I don't know. I have no clue. I no longer work there anymore. But, it's when they were actually doing the grounds, you know, whatever, you know, the gravel and putting the gravel and all that stuff on there, somebody, I don't know, worked there, got angry or whatever at one of our dogs, and threw an X-acter knife, right open, aimed it right at him. He ended up getting nailed in the tail. Didn't get nailed too bad, you know, where it killed him, but it made him really howl. And it freaked my mom out, and my mom practically almost had a heart attack over that, because she's very, very sensitive, she's a very sweet lady, and her heart can only take so much. And when she seen that, she was out in the back, she was letting the dogs go potty. And she's, you know, she didn't see the person who did it, but she seen the X-acter knife fly over the fence, and it nailed the dog, just a little tiny little dog, right in the tail. Now, why was that not addressed, or why was that not brought up, or why is not even a concern? I don't know. But, as far as I'm concerned, if somebody's, you know, whatever, working on the grounds and all that, and you've got little dogs, much less little kids, to me, I think if little kids are out there, they're probably liable to throw some knife at them too, you know? And so, my, my thing is, is I think they should really, really thoroughly check into who they're hiring, really look into deep into the background, like, you know, should be anyway. That was one of my main concerns. That literally freaked my mom out to the point where she thought she was in danger. She thought somebody tried to aim at her, to kill her, because she was actually out there in the yard, out there with the dog, you know, watching the dog. And she said, that X-acter knife actually got close to her, but she, she kind of like moved out of the way pretty quick, so she's pretty smart. But, my concern, yeah, the noise, the dust, and all that, the same thing, the same trip, ain't nothing different. But, my concern's for my mom. For me, I can handle, I can handle a bomb go off, and that won't bother me one tiny bit. But, my mom is just, no, she's everything to me. And I would, I want as much as possible safety for her, and everybody else in the trailer park. I mean, if somebody is having a problem or a bad day, that's fine, I understand. I have bad days, I work at Idaho Pizza. But, can't be freaking out and taking that on people's animals, or throwing things in their yards, you know, I mean, just, it just really didn't make no sense to me. And I'm really not that good with this. I never do no council or, you know, city hall or nothing like that. But, I moved here from Tri-Cities, now November, the, I don't know, it was November, it was almost, it was a little over Halloween, and I came out here to help my mom. And she's never in, in all of her 10 years since she lived here, 2010, ever experienced anything like that. People are generally nice, the trailer park is peaceful, I love it there. The manager, he's awesome, I mean, he's like one of my best friends. But, as far as it comes to, you know, I mean, you've got elder people, you've got people that can't handle so much, much less is loud noise. The heart could be bad, you know, I mean, I think they got to think about precautions for other people, instead of thinking about the business. I understand the business has to be run. I know that, I understand that. And I respect that, because like I said, I worked there. It was an awesome place to work, but, as far as it comes to everybody else's health, I'm concerned about that big time. And so, other than that, I think Woodgrain's awesome. It's just be a little bit careful, man, be on alert on what you're doing, you know, whatever. If you accidentally slip out of your hand, well, that's understandable, but you practically almost killed, you know, an animal or whatever, and it's just, I addressed it, I told, you know, what's his name, Scott? I addressed that to him, and what he told me is, there's nothing he can do. And I was like, "Well, okay." And the reason why I brought it to him is because my mom asked me to. She says, "You, you used to work there, I know you liked that place, it was a cool place." I was like, "Yeah, everybody was cool, man, there's no problem." But, she said, "Because of that incident, that needs to be brought up." And I was like, "Okay." And so, but, nothing was said about it, or whatever. And so, other than that, I don't know, maybe I'm just blabbing, I don't know. I'm tired, I've been working all day.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions for Robert? Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Evelyn Warner. I live in Desert Rose Estates, number 34. My husband was up a minute ago. We are right at the end of that line where the wall is, between Sharon and, I'm sorry. Yeah, we know cars, that's it, we've been snowed in, you know. I worked at Simplot for 26 years, and I worked in the wastewater field where we had issues that we had to address, not just wastewater, but air quality. And my thing that I've been trying to do since I've been retired is get healthier, and I've noticed I get my metal detector out just a little bit in the last two weeks. And there's a certain time of the day, 2:30 in the afternoon, I'll say, "It is, it smells like glue." I can't, you know, as a kid, I didn't really do that, you know, kids do that, but you can go out there, and I don't know that you get high, because it's, you know, it's higher in the air, but I know there are standards for the air quality having to meet something, some guidelines there. And it's not just one time, it's every day. So I don't know, on that part, if that's an issue here, it wasn't brought up with the barriers as far as, other than the fence line for the, the trailer park. But, and I, I'm really not familiar with the area. We just moved in December, and then we were here three days, and then we got snowed in. So we really haven't been out a lot. We were required to move from Napa. We've been through break-ins, stolen vehicles on our other trailer that we had to just leave behind, it was vandalized with that, in a trailer park that was closing. We hope to have a new start here and not have to face, you know, a nanny issue, a problem, or drugs, or whatever. And just kind of my home, it must be good neighbors and that kind of thing. We both, my husband and I both have lung issues to be able to breathe. He's on oxygen, hurting there all the time, day and night. I am not, but I have very bad asthma, and I don't, I have had several episodes of not being able to breathe. So the air quality is important to me. And I'm not just saying that as, gee, what do you do? I know, because I know we at Simplot had to abide by certain qualifications, and that went through the, you know, my department, I wasn't in the lead or anything, but any kind of waters, you know, any kind of spill of any grease or anything, we had to address it. And so I know those are, those are things that have to be addressed. I know, last week, that lot behind, not the building itself, but I'm sure it was clear full of lumber, stacked lumber there, but the lot that they built up, that was completely full. And yes, they were out at 11:30, midnight, I don't know, and yeah, our bedding's in the back. I learned, I'm turning the ballgames on. I learned one time ago, because I worked nights, I always had some kind of a noise if I could to, to, to counteract all the dogs barking and things like that, so. But, the wall does not protect us from anything. Whose side of the wall are the trees going to be on? The leaves are going to come to my yard, I'm sorry, but they are. If they're on their side or my side, it doesn't matter. And the dust and that, I, we don't know, we got snowed in, we haven't had to deal with it yet. But, if others have noticed the dust and that kind of thing, yes, I heard the heisters all night long, and I'm, wow. And it is the back of the alarm on the heister. I'm, you know, have done enough work in the warehouse to know how that goes. I walked to the park the other day. Pennsylvania isn't very far, very wide. You know, I don't understand real much about subdivisions around that, but I was a little disappointed in the park, because I don't see much access. I walked through the parking area, I guess that's parking, I really haven't been around the whole park yet, but it's limited there too. So, what does the community want for everybody? Who all, you know, is it just for the business? That looks like farmland to me on the other side there, I know it's for sale, I've seen signs over there, why not go the other way, toward the middle where there's nobody there? I understand it has to do with cost effectiveness and all that, and I'm glad that the, the community has a business that is there to employ people, I do understand that. Like I said, I, I was at Simplot for a long time in various positions, so I'm aware of that. I don't know about the cigarette butts or the parking, but I could appreciate that problem too. Trust me, when we saw a hard hat come across the screen with the potato waste, we didn't know whether ahead of us coming with it after a while or not. So, you know, I'm kind of, I'm pretty observant. I had to be on the job that I had, in the wastewater department and with pumps and all that. So I hear things like that, when the pump kicks on, I hear it. When, you know, when you hear noise like heister, I hear it. I'm very observant on that. And I do have animals too, and, you know, it's just a matter of getting things together for us, but I'm pretty disappointed that, I thought we were going to be moving to a community that would just be great for retirement, and I'm not so sure. Well, right there on that end, and right next to the wall, and it doesn't completely go past our place, it's kind of half and half. And beyond that, of course, there's nothing, so, I don't know, you know, we watched them shovel the snow off. That wall, between the wall and that building that was put up is only, what, 20 feet? It's not very wide. Where are they going to put trees in there? Are they going to move the whole building? I don't think so. So that's something to consider. How are they going to put a barrier up with trees, and which side of the fence are they going to be on? And who's going to be responsible for the cleanup? I already have one tree that I wish it didn't have, because I seen the leaves, it was there when I moved in. But, I'll deal with it. But 30, you know, however many 30-foot trees, those are going to be pretty big and fast growing, and it's not going to be easy.
Okay. Any questions to Mrs. Warner? Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name's Tyson Gerterner. I live at 303 Northwest 9th Street, Fruitland, obviously.
Your last name again?
Gerterner, G-E-R-T-N-E-R. Nice lady reference, people on the other side of John's Field, that's us, we live over there on 9th Street. I just want to let everybody know, I'm actively been employed in the trucking industry for 20 years. I've driven trucks on Woodgrain's property and actually picked up loads over there, so I'm pro trucks, I really am. But, there are some issues with the park and stuff, truck traffic, there's a lot of things. We do have to coexist in this manner, you know, with Woodgrain, got neighbors that work at Woodgrain. There's a variety of issues. I think, you know, the biggest I want to encourage the council is to understand that there, there's two sides of it, and, and Woodgrain doesn't want to represent the smokers out there. Appreciate the other gentleman that brought that up. That is an issue, the people across Pennsylvania have that issue. There are some ongoing issues. We live there, I, we've enjoyed living in our place for 11 years, it's a great home. We raised our family there, our kids have gone to the school district, you know, I've lived here longer than anywhere else, and I relocated here from the Portland area. But, there's, there's noise on our end of it, and, you know, it is a factor. I understand, they're going to be, they're going, they're going to do business. I think I just, I would just like to encourage the council, as any progress is moved forward on the Woodgrain side, there's going to be an impact. And if, if these measures are put into place beforehand, I think that's going to ease the transition. Inevitably, there's probably going to be some new growth for Woodgrain and stuff, but if, if some of these things can be put in place, then Woodgrain would, would want to do that, you know, as we coexist. There's neighborhoods, there's residential and commercial, it's just a mix, it is what it is, but there are impacts to the neighborhoods on all, all areas, all sides of that. So I just wanted to throw that out there, and I appreciate it.
Any questions to Mr. Gerterner? Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am. Step up to the podium, please.
I just have a follow-up question for you.
Step up to the podium, please, your name and address.
That's why I was going to stand there. I was just on my phone, I was just... As long as I'm up here, I'll just say everything.
Your name and address, please.
My name is Cheryl Spaulding, C-A-T-R-Y-L-S-P-A-U-L-D-I-N-G. I live at 193 Ashloop.
Okay.
Very close to Woodgrain. I have COPD, but I also live in a community that is 55 and old, and it's right across from Desert Rose Estates. My concern is, in the wintertime, very often those trucks stay running, and I've seen a lot of them parked over at Woodgrain now, and they'll wind up, all winter they were there. And so, I'm wondering about the exhaust and the quality of our air. If you get all of the people that are parked in the parking lot, and then the trucks that are parked, and if they're running the motors, when they sit out there and smoke, they do run their motors while they're waiting. So if you can hear my voice, I'm kind of pleading for the old people, which I became very soon. The other thing I was worried about was the children's having to breathe that air. I grew up breathing cigarette smoke, and for a while I smoked myself, and this is a result. And so, when I smell the onion plant, when the onions are season, but I also smell other things, like exhaust comes into my house, and I don't think there's enough emphasis on that. That's a small area, and it's getting, they're trying to cram so many things in that, that area of 16th Street, across railroad tracks. And Pennsylvania is really mostly residential, or is it, is it all commercial? Are we commercial? Zone commercial?
No, you're residential.
Are we? So across the tracks, is mostly residential?
East of the tracks, yes.
Okay, I was wondering that. Anyway, thanks for listening.
Okay, any questions, Mrs. Aller? Okay? Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Suzanne Nishizaki, I live on 7255 Elmore Road, so I have a question about that, as far as where the trucks are going to come, are they going to come down Elmore to First and then Pennsylvania, or that? That's a question I have. But my dad, I'm speaking for my dad, he lives on 1040 North Pennsylvania Avenue, which is right across the street from the entrance, where the trucks are, we're going to increase the trucking routes. When we lived there in 1969, we could ride our bikes all day long there, and maybe see one or two cars. It was awesome. Obviously, times have changed, and progress is happening, I know we can't stop that. But I raised two kids, we would use Mesa Park a lot, we would go there for soccer games, softball games, you name it. And I don't know if you've been to any of those, but if you have, you know the influx of traffic that's there during one of those games. When the games are over, there's a big mad rush out of there, and then a new mad rush of people come in for the next round. And if you've got trucks coming in there, extra trucks, that is a big concern to me. I don't know which, again, I don't know exactly which way they're coming, if they're going to be passing Mesa Park, or coming the other way. But, you know, people also bike and jog, I visit my dad quite often, and I see people jogging, biking, walking down that road to get to the park, so they can enjoy that music. So I'm worried about the safety of kids, I see a lot of kids doing that. I'm also worried about my dad, he's 85 years old, backing out of his driveway onto that busy road. It's already scary, for me even, to do it, let alone, you know, some of these older people that are living along the road there. We also have had an issue with the cigarette butts on dad's property, which I hate. You drive up there at night, and you see people smoking in front of his fence, I just really don't, I just really dislike that. I realize they can't smoke on their property, but, you know, don't throw your cigarette butts around my dad's property. So those are just a few of my concerns. Again, I wonder if this traffic route, or the trucks are going to be routed from Emmett to Elmore, does anybody, can anybody answer that?
Pick that up, you will.
Because that will impact me. So, and Elmore's already really narrow, so, those are my concerns, thank you for listening.
Okay. Anyone else? You're in the black, yeah, clear to the back there.
Hi, my name's Javier Marquez, I live at 205 Northeast 11th Street, Fruitland, and actually, my street butts right into Pennsylvania, where the proposed commercial entrance is on the east side of Woodgrain, there at the stop sign. I actually still have a child who goes to that bus, school bus stop, right there at the stop sign. And so, it really impacts myself, my family, my neighbors. And so, this proposed route between Northeast 11th up Pennsylvania towards 16th has two bus stops. The other one is right in front of Mesa Verde Apartments. This proposed route of city street, it doesn't have any shoulders, it's, there's nowhere to hardly pull over. In the spring and summertime, when there's tennis games and tennis matches there at the park, the shoulders are just lined with cars, and there, a lot of them are sitting on the white line, the fog line, so, you know, much less can a commercial vehicle go through there safely. This proposed area too, also has a lack of lighting. There's a lack of streetlights in that area during winter hours, for example, right now we just sprung forward, so when my kid is at the bus stop right now, it's dark, and there's no streetlight there, and there's no streetlight in front of the Mesa Verde Apartments bus stop either. The other thing is that this proposed commercial route doesn't make any sense to me, because it's cutting right through the middle of several housing subdivisions. You have Desert Rose on the west side, and you have the Mesa Verde Apartments on the east side, Mesa Park on the east side, and you have Alpa Road, my subdivision, on the east side also. So a commercial route going through the middle of subdivisions doesn't make much sense to me. So I believe that this commercial route poses a traffic safety hazard risk to other vehicles, to pedestrians, to bicyclists, because of the lack of shoulders. Yeah, the, kind of the last thing I want to say too, is that a lot of people in this room, and other residents in Fruitland, have a lot of their life savings invested in their homes around this area, and I believe that this proposed route of Pennsylvania should continue acting as a buffer zone between the commercial and the residential areas as it currently stands. Because, you know, that's, we have a lot of investment here, we want to try to keep our peace of mind and our peace of living, because that's why a lot of us love Fruitland, we love the schools, we love our housing, and with this proposed commercial noise and activity around in this area, it's going to make a lot of us maybe consider moving to a quieter place, it's going to probably make our housing values go down too, so, that's about all I have.
Okay, any questions for Javier Marquez? Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Greg Pence, 310 Northeast 11th Street, Fruitland. There's been a lot said tonight, it's kind of disturbing, as far as being a good neighbor, you've already heard about the cigarette butts, the trucks coming and stopping, you already know about the heister reviews, you already know about the sound issues, you know about the dust issues, you know what they are, they are not good neighbors. That disturbs me to hear, when I sit here and listen about an industry in Fruitland, that they're not good neighbors to the people that surround their industry. That should disturb the council, to think that we have an industry that's not polite to their neighbors, and not respectful of their neighbors. I'd like to have somebody care about the people that invest in this community, that put their life savings in their houses, that have it on the line. I grant that commercial property is a valuable part of your asset base for taxing districts, and the employees pay taxes, I get that. But they also have a responsibility to be respectful to the place they do business, and by God, we're not hearing it. I am disappointed to hear that their employees come over and throw butts in the neighbors' houses. Come on! That's just something that they need to talk to their employees about, of being respectful to the neighbors. Basic, just basic employee reaction. They're not doing it. Yet you're going to trust them of driving through our neighborhoods, bringing their trucks in, unannounced, any hour of the day they want, and don't care about anybody? It's obvious that they're going to run over us, and they're going to take advantage, because of what they've done in the past, in their past history. All I'm saying is, please make them be respectful, courteous, make the right decisions as our city council, to protect us as your citizens, not just about money issues and tax base and employment, it's deeper than that. It's about respect.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name's Glenn Sinclair, I'm at 309 Northeast 11th Street, here in Fruitland, 83619. And I'm Greg, and the gentleman Javier's neighbor. And I agree with him totally, that street is so dead gum narrow, Pennsylvania, that I don't know why you'd want to bring a semi down. If I watched those guys haul that material in to that, and I live right on 11th Street, which is the entrance, or the exit, whatever, to the business. And they had a heck of a time making the corners the way it was, they were bringing the stuff in to put it underneath the building. And as far as the front-end loaders, the gentleman that got up here earlier and said, "You cannot disconnect a backup alarm," that's OSHA violation, so what do you do? At 3 o'clock in the morning, this poor lady gets up, and she sits there and listens to this crap. Now, you gentlemen from this industry, and just like Mr. Pence just said, you know this, we're here invested, our life savings in this little town, my grandparents grew up in this town, and worked here when it was called Fruitland, and all the apple orchards were here. So I have a lot of ties way back when, my dad was out here with the Limbows, the Mogasins, and all these people. And I watched these people sit in front of this gentleman's house on the corner and smoke cigarettes. Let me ask you something, I worked around industries my whole life, I worked for Idaho Power for 40 years. Now if you wanted to smoke a cigarette, why don't you make a designated smoking spot? I don't give a rat's butt to what religion you are.
Okay, in a mean big word, I have to ask the audience not to react to speakers, we have to provide a neutral environment where everybody of every viewpoint is allowed to say their views and be comfortable saying them. So, I do have to ask that please address the question, not the audience.
Well, and I disagree with your comment there, and I'm not here to argue with you. I'm here on the benefit of myself and these people, that's why I'm here. I took time out of my evening, because I sat home with my weenie dog. And, and they respect me, they don't go to the neighbors. But my spiel on these smoking is, why can't you designate a smoking area for your people? I watched them sit on 16th Street, in their cars, running in the middle of the night, and those guys, those people, those employees respected their business enough, that they drove off of the premise and sat out in front of people's houses with the engines running, and smoked their cigarettes. I watched them sit in front of the man, he lived right up the block from me. I watched those people sit at his fence. And I'm sure they didn't pack the cigarette butts back to the building, but why can't you put in a designated smoking area? And as far as the backup alarms, I've been around, and you can't shut them off, at 3 o'clock in the morning, 7 o'clock at night, and the children, like they said, there's two bus stops out there. And those poor kids have to walk from their houses, probably eighth of a mile down to those bus stops, and it's right on an area that's really busy with traffic right now, just public traffic. And those kids have, they stand there with no lighting, at a stop sign, and wait for the buses to come. And all I can say is this, you know, everybody wants industries, everybody wants the financial, the finances brought into the city you're at, it pays better taxes, it helps us all. But we've got to live together as people, and work with the residential and the commercial. And that street has no sidewalks, has garbage along it, has a big pile of dirt, there's no curbs, there's no gutters, hardly to speak of Pennsylvania, and yet you want to bring semis down it. Why couldn't you turn them off of 16th and make them go through there? That's a whole lot better commercial area. Why do you want to bring them into a residential area? I don't understand this. And that's all I have to say, and thank you for your time.
Any questions, Mr. Sinclair? Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Seneca Woods, S-E-N-E-C-A, I live at 210 Northeast 12th Streets, right across from Mesa Park. Aside from the concerns that have already been mentioned for traffic and safety, I just have two, I guess, questions. If the increased traffic of semis coming down Pennsylvania increases, is there going to be a backup of semis on Pennsylvania? Where will they park? Will they park across from the tennis courts, waiting to turn into there? Because there is that section of dirt, which used to be a ditch, they covered it up with dirt, but I don't know what load that can handle, if a truck parked down there fully loaded. And another concern I have is wear and tear on the road, with that loads coming in with those trucks, what kind of damage over time will happen to that road, and who will be responsible for maintaining it or paying for it when it breaks down? Those are the concerns I have. Thank you.
Okay, but your last name was Woods?
Woods.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Woods? Thank you. Anyone else? Okay?
My name is Trevor Castor, 100 Northwest 16th Street. I'd like to thank all of our neighbors for being here today, I appreciate that, I think we'd live in a better world if more people participated in the local government, so thank you. We appreciate the diligence of the city council during the participation in the Payette County Conditional Use Permit application that was submitted by Woodgrain. The city council recognized that there were items missing from that application, and upon receipt of the missing site plan, it was disclosed that the proposed new use was not an employee parking lot, but that it was a heavy industrial use. We hope to see in action the city of Fruitland's commitment to quality of life by promoting livability, community safety, and aesthetically pleasing surroundings. We'd like to ask our neighbor, Woodgrain Millwork, and Mr. Eastman, to not locate the heavy industrial loading and staging yard in the significant increase in semi-traffic on Pennsylvania Avenue. The employee parking lot is a much more compatible use, that's what was included in the application for the permit to build the storage shed, that's what has been there previously, along with the single-family home, on the 1.3-acre lot, as well as all the trees that acted as a great buffer from the uses that were already over there, that were causing noise, dust, light glare, and other issues. For several elderly residents, disabled persons, young families with young children, and anyone who's not able to move away from the resulting impacts that this proposed situation would cause, it represents an unnecessary and unfair financial hardship. cause, it represents an unnecessary and unfair financial hardship to a large number of residents around the Mesa Park area in Fruitland. The negative effect on the quality of the residential environment for hundreds of people in this impact area could easily reduce home values and the corresponding tax base to a level that will potentially well overshadow any benefits to the greater community of If the city chooses to move forward with the applications or permit these new uses, then we ask that we at least see a written expression of the ordinances that do exist in a development agreement or somewhere in writing, and that those improvements are made prior to any approval for them to move forward with any new uses. We had hoped to see some of the progress that was made in the Valentine's Day Planning and Zoning Commission hearing listed in the minutes. We did not see them there. It was my understanding, I believe, from that hearing, that the number was 27 trucks a day. While a concrete block fence is an important part of the required buffer, we clearly heard here today from the testimony that by itself, it's entirely insufficient. It's insufficient to block the noise, the dust, the vibrations, the light glare that's already affecting the homes in our communities. From a 38-foot-tall building, it's shining right down and illuminating a whole section of our neighborhood. The backup alarms are an issue. OSHA states that they usually run about 100 to 110 decibels. That's equivalent to a rock and roll concert. So if anyone believes that a rock and roll concert running all night, every night, for forever into the future, right in the Mesa Park area, would be a problem to their home, their quiet enjoyment of their home, or their home value, then this is an issue for them. Our city had the foresight to adopt a comprehensive Fruitland City Code, and the ordinances provided in there provide us a roadmap, a lot of them specifically address if heavy industrial is proposed next to residential. We'd like to see those in writing in the development plan, not proposed to be addressed after the fact, after everything's approved and everything's in action, to maybe be put in at a later date. We'd like to see what's going to be done, what the conditions are going to be in writing as part of a development agreement prior to any approvals. I guess that's it. I feel like everybody else covered it really well here today. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Castor? Thank you, Trevor. Yes, sir.
My name is David Bartle. I reside at 2533 North Bruins Circle, and my wife Cindy and I are participating in the ownership partnership at Desert Rose Estates. I'm here representing the partnership, as well as all of our residents that we care deeply about.
David, what was that address again?
2533 North Bruins Circle.
Yeah.
83704, sorry.
Hey, go ahead.
Yeah. So I'm going to start on page three of the handout. And these are conditions of approval if, as Mr. Castor indicated, the city council decides to move forward with the approval of Woodgrain's application. These are conditions of approval that we feel would be necessary to mitigate effects. So we respectfully request that the city council condition any approval of Woodgrain's applications with the measure necessary to mitigate. And I'd like to refer briefly to page two, which I cut and pasted several elements of the Fruitland City Code out of there and highlighted in red, and I just wanted to refer to one piece of that, and that's 106B-1, the purpose. And this is in reference to heavy industrial next to residential, and it says, "These areas require buffering from residential use to mitigate the effects of noise, vibration, traffic, odor, dust, smoke, or glare that is typically associated with these uses." And so, and as you well know, the rest of the code all basically is derived from that. So, back to the conditions of approval. The first thing we'd like, as Trevor indicated, is that we'd like conditions of approval that must be met and in place and in writing and enforceable prior to utilization of any new land uses. Then, I'd like to refer briefly to page four, which is a modified site plan, where we have taken the liberty of adding in a landscape buffer and the concrete block wall. So we'd like to see installed and perpetually maintained a 20-foot landscape buffer with a double row of evergreen trees, not deciduous trees, but evergreen trees. Evergreen trees are denser, they provide better noise mitigation. I've done a little bit of internet research, and we all know what great things you can find on the internet, but I can't find, point to some scientific data regarding noise abatement due to vegetation, and perhaps an acoustic engineer should come and design this buffer. But this is what we have in mind. Extend that existing concrete block wall, as Mr. Eastman indicated, out to Pennsylvania Avenue. There is a water line easement 20 foot wide down that, down the property line. We'd actually like to restrict the hours of operation of the newly constructed East Storage Building and the new East Staging Loading and Unloading Yard from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and nothing on Sunday. And this is pertaining only to noise emitting. If we have an electric forklift that makes no noise, with no backup beepers, and maybe uses radar for safety instead of backup beepers, that'll be fine. But, like I said, this pertains only to noise emitting operations, the forklift backup alarms, and truck traffic, and so forth. I believe that all the areas will be paved or are going to be utilized by vehicles, but we definitely want to ensure that for dust. And pleased to see that Mr. Eastman referenced that they're going to provide all the landscaping per city ordinances for the parking lots and so forth. Minimize the lighting glare. So, any new construction, we'd definitely require that all the glare be designed to illuminate their property and not our property, and we would really appreciate it to install light block shields on the recently constructed East Storage Building. And next, no idling trucks or vehicles. If the vehicle is not actually performing an operation like moving material, the engine should be off. And this pertains, it comes down to noise and pollution. Now, we've had an ongoing concern with stormwater. We recognize that the stormwater, the site design will go through a design review with stormwater engineer and so forth, but we just want to express that we have continuing concerns about that. Their property is higher than ours, and we just need to ensure that none of the water makes its way into our property. And then, lastly, we just appreciate if, in the design of whatever use that is, comes of this property, if the noisiest activities will be moved furthest away from residential, whether it's our residential area or anyone else's, we'd really appreciate that. Then, I'm almost done. On page five, we took the liberties, including a site plan that we believe was submitted for when the East Storage Building permit was granted, and this shows employee parking lot, which is, of course, the use that we would find far more preferable than the staging yard. And then, page six shows the 2015 site plan as it was built in, and that shows an aerial view of Desert Rose Estates and the 1.3-acre parcel overlaid on that site plan. You can see the original employee parking lot, and where that heavily wooded areas, those trees are all gone now, and that's all gravel. So all that noise and dust mitigation has been replaced by activity. So then, one last page, and I'll be done. The area of impact page, it shows an aerial view. There's a red rectangle that shows that 1.3-acre parcel. And then, Mr. Castor went out and interviewed some people and listened for himself, and this is our interpretation of where noise is objectionable and then annoying. That's the, inside the red circle is objectional, outside, between the red circle and the yellow circle is annoying. The reality of those backup alarms is that they are designed to be annoying. That's exactly what they're supposed to do, and they are allowed, and for good reason. It's a safety issue. We completely get that. But that is incompatible with sleeping, that is incompatible with having friends over on Sunday afternoon for barbecue on your patio and those kinds of things. So, that's all I have. We appreciate the statement that Mr. Eastman made earlier about their willingness to look at the city codes and ordinances pertaining to this heavy industrial use next to residential, and we look forward to seeing the results of that. So, thank you.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Bartle? Thanks, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Phil Spurling. That's S-P-U-R-L-I-N-G. I've been living in, at 100 Northwest 16th Street, number 104. It's in Desert Rose Estates Park. I've been there just shy of nine years now, and also employed as a resident manager of the park, so interact with a lot of the residents. I just want to hit two points that I think have been hit on, and everything else has been hit. One is the wall, and I think one reason the existing wall on the south end is not as effective as it used to be, because they've backed them behind the wall. Look around the corner of the wall, it's like two, three feet higher. So effectively, the wall on their side, which is supposed to deflect noise, is maybe four, four and a half feet high. So that's one reason it's not working as good as it should. And that was when they leveled that new lot, and they leveled around the building, they leveled everything else, including between the wall and the new building. So, that is one point. And the other point is stormwater running along North Pennsylvania. It's really not tied into what they're doing, other than any water they drain is going to go into the street, which is going to go down alongside of our property line. Since the ditch was removed, thank goodness, it was a horrible sight, all that stormwater runs down the gutter around the junction, or around the corner along Northwest 16th Street, and the entire storm drains on the north end of the park. Whatever's done with that, North Pennsylvania, I think hopefully will include stormwater drainage to get rid of that water before it becomes an issue, especially down around that intersection where it flows quite deep. Then I wanted to speak for Dell Wilson in number 29. I couldn't get him to come. He's on one of those leashes. He's smoked when he was younger, so his lungs are ruined, so he can't get too far away from his oxygen machine. And he's probably one of the most verbal in our park. He's got a nickname, the mayor, you know, because he don't mind telling you what he believes. Two things, he, two things still work good, though, his hearing and his nose. He can hear the backup alarms, he can hear the diesels running, but what even concerns him more is the smell of the diesel. I spoke with him the other day when I was telling him the new schedule of the meeting, and he said, "That diesel forklift, it's driving me crazy." And it's the smell, because it just seems to sell around his house. And then, of course, in the summertime, he uses a swamp cooler, which sucks all the air in from outside, so it's only going to get worse when the summertime runs. And a lot of people use swamp coolers in this area for cooling, so he's not alone. But his biggest concern is going to be the diesel fumes from trucks, or even the equipment idling there, and then secondary, the noise. And I just wanted to bring that up for him, because I just couldn't get him to come. He just can't get that far away from his oxygen machines. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, David, got the last, the last bit of time.
All right, thank you. Thank you for everybody who's come out tonight, and I really do value your feedback, and I really do value what you've said. Understandably, I've made a few notes. Let's talk about, we'll get it, we'll get it off the table right now, just because I feel passionately about it. The smoking issue is completely unacceptable, and I was unaware of it.
David, David.
Oh, sorry. As the city council would like to know, smoking issue, entirely unacceptable. I was unaware of it, and I, too, sometimes have been annoyed by people parking, trying to pull out and blocking traffic, and I will absolutely address that personally. That makes me crazy to know that we'd have employees that would go do that. I think as a, to help the neighbors and their concerns on the whole, I'd like to clarify a little bit about the traffic pattern and what's going to happen. Trucks will come in on progress and make their way up 95 and then to Gayway or to 16th and 95, and turn onto the property, at which point they'll be staged on, off of 16th Street, and two at a time will be allowed to go and go and unload their lumber in that turnaround. We don't have a lot of room in that, understandably, so we can't have a ton of trucks backing up and trying to unload lumber at once. So it's going to be a somewhat organized process off of Pennsylvania.
So, excuse me, the staging will happen up on 16th somewhere?
That's my understanding, yeah.
Yeah, back there by the, by that building right next to the railroad tracks.
Yeah, on our gravel road.
They'll come in there, and they'll, they'll be staged right through there, and then we'll send two at a time back to be unloaded.
The staging won't be on.
What's happening?
The staging will not be on 16th, but in your parking lot.
Exactly. It won't be on the street.
Yeah, it'll be in our parking lot, in our area.
I think one of the things I'd like to kind of really point out is that although it seems to some of the neighbors that things are dire right now, what we have planned will only improve what is the situation right now. We have a parcel of land that is one acre, and we haven't built a barrier, because we haven't started construction on that parcel of land. It's not paved. There are noise issues, and there are dust issues, because there's no barrier and there's no paving. The drainage, if I could speak to the drainage, we've installed a French drain. It will not drain into the street. We've had engineered plans and engineered installation. We checked it with the city, and the drain is up and functional, and there's no drainage issues as far as we know.
And then with the wall also, that's one of the...
Yeah, the wall will mitigate any drainage issues as well. As to the barrier, the drainage, the paving, all of that will be done in respecting city ordinance. We have no choice. It's, we're legally bound to construct it the way the city has specified that we construct it. We may even go beyond it if we feel it's necessary, but if they have, if the neighbors have concerns about barriers, or noise, or dust, or landscaping, it's all in city code, and we intend to follow city code. And just to kind of understand where things are right now, we are not using that parcel. So anything that is taking place is already on land that is designated heavy industrial, and that is part of our existing facilities. And the noise issue probably is an issue, because we have a gap in the fence, we have a gap in the barrier. And we do probably have dust issues, because we haven't paved the turnaround yet. But anything that's going on is not happening on that new acreage. As to backup alarms, we have backup alarms on everything. We have not disabled our backup alarms, so...
Mayor, can I ask a question about that? I'm not sure if you're aware, but actually, actually, the OSHA regulation only requires a backup alarm when you've got an obstructive view of the rear and nobody there to guide the vehicle. Otherwise, it doesn't require a backup alarm, and the alarm only needs to be loud enough to be heard over ambient noise. So often, what places do is they have them much louder than they need to be. And I don't know if, or is there a way to even decrease the sound of that alarm, which is perfectly legal, provided it can be heard over your in vehicles?
I don't see why not. I could look into it.
Because most of those alarms are 97 to 112 decibels, which actually does exceed the city.
Okay.
So, that would be one thing to look into. It's 29, 29 CFR, 1926.601B4.
You lost me at code federal regulation. CFR, or what?
29 CFR.
Yes.
Point, part, 1926.
19.26?
No, 1926.
Okay.
.601.
.601.
B, as a void.
Okay.
Four.
B4. B4. All right.
So, just so you know, you may actually be using a louder alarm than you need to, and you may be using alarms when you're not legally required to modify them, which I think might help alleviate some of the concerns for residents.
Okay. Mark, you don't have that reference, I've got that, right?
I've got it.
Oh, yeah, all right. We'll hit the Code of Federal Regulations tomorrow and have lunch together again. Let's see. So, noise, obviously there are alternatives for noise. And, and again, the existing noise is, has nothing to do with the acreage in question. If there are improvements that we need to make, such as addressing the noise, that's a property as a whole. And we welcome, to the council, we welcome any feedback from our neighbors, especially, I know it just grates on me, and I have to address it again, especially the smoking issue. That kills me, that, that, that we'd have employees that would do that. Let's see, we do extensive background checks for our employees. I think one of the things that I'd like to kind of paint in the bigger picture as well is if we are able to get this paved and move our materials, there will be less, actually less traffic, and less forklift traffic, because our operations become more efficient. And so, whereas forklifts are bringing things from different parts of the area, and trucks are coming in, if we have our operations where we are dropping off lumber in one place, the forklifts bring it from one building to the adjacent building, there's less traffic. And I know somebody mentioned, "Why don't we have an employee parking lot there instead of that?" It would be a nightmare, traffic-wise. I mean, you'd have 14 trucks a day versus several shifts of employees coming and going out that exit. And to that point, we've had, for 20 years, trucks coming and going out that exit. And the activity, again, that exists on that property has not changed because of the acreage that we bought, the acreage in question. It can only get better, and that's why we're asking, and that's why we're bringing it up here, so we can make it more efficient, we can cut down our traffic, we can cut down the noise, we can cut down the distance the forklifts are driving, we can cut down the dust, and I'd ask that you approve our applications. Any questions?
I have a question on the parking lot next to the Tesoro property.
Yes.
I'm not understanding the connection of paving that later, when the, you know, we're going to do something with the Tesoro, I don't understand the timing.
Well, we'd like to pave it, but we were under the understanding the city wanted to share the Tesoro property with us if we were sharing some of the developing costs of the parking lot. So we don't want to pave a parking lot, and then have a parking lot available where the city says, "Well, if only you had held off, we have this parking lot that you can use."
Those are some issues we've talked about with, with the owner of Woodgrain about doing a share thing, if we do get that Tesoro property.
Okay, so you got, we haven't...
Right.
I didn't know that.
There's nothing definitive on that yet.
What about the, the issue of minimizing the light glare with that new building, and the recommendation of the blocks, or where you block the light, where it's just glare guards?
Sure, we're open to that.
Okay. Is that something put in the development agreement?
Uh, is it in city ordinance?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll respect that. And as one who has called the city when they put a McDonald's in, and it looked like they were trying to get airplanes to land behind my house, I called the city, and they spoke with the owner, and they moved the lights to be compliant with city code.
East of the...
Yeah.
Any other questions?
So the staging of the two vehicles, is that two coming in, unloading and leaving, and then two more come, or two, two leave your staging and head down Pennsylvania, and then you send two more right after that?
I'll let Mark, I'll defer to Mark.
As soon as the two are unloaded, then we'll send two more. So I would say that, that'd be gone, and then we'll send two more.
And then, so, I think you talked about the traffic pattern.
So do they enter North Pennsylvania and then exit on North Pennsylvania also? Or do they go on through the plant?
Right now, we're wanting to enter and exit the same on North Pennsylvania.
You can't, you can't talk.
Any other questions?
Sure. I had a question brought up about heavy industrial and as far as timeframes. Does the, does the industry have a set stop time per, for the noise, 11 o'clock was mentioned, is that...
That's all city code, and the chief has just looked at that. What you got?
I did, and the only place I saw the 11 o'clock timeframe was in the actual violations in subsection four. But it didn't really state it's industrial, for an industrial...
It says shipping?
Because it says industrial all times.
Right. So it gives industrials a feedway.
So, what does it say? What's the hours?
Well, it doesn't give any hours for industrial, it says all times for industrial. All I'm saying is if there is a, in the violations portion under section four...
Okay.
It stays to 11 o'clock, it would be cut off, but it, it's more so, it seems to me that it would be more so for just people in the park, or people on a city street that are having a party, yelling, or something like that, so that's why it was a little, my interpretation might not be correct.
No, I, I agree, I do find that there was actually a cutoff for industrial, the ways it's ordered in the code currently.
Okay.
There's different, for both commercial and residential, you have different levels for day and evening and night, a day and night, and a cutoff, but commercial, I mean, for industrial...
I thought there was something specific in industrial to shipping and...
So I guess my question is, where that was brought up, is it, I don't know the operation was very well enough, is that feasible to where the lumber could be taken in prior to, say, 11 o'clock, and stacked up basically to where you could operate through the night?
Yeah, that's our plan currently, so we won't have trucks coming into that. Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, he'll just shake his head at me. But, we have trucks coming in, up until about 7 o'clock, unloading their lumber. Now, they'll have the lumber unloaded at that shed, where we will have to go and pick it to feed the operations that do, that do exist during the nighttime hours, but that'll just be forklifts, and not trucks coming through that area to drop off their lumber.
Sounds like that's kind of one of the big concerns, right, about the backup alarms, maybe they have to go adjust codes.
It's possible, I'm, I'm not going to rule it out, I, if it, if it is possible, and it makes us a better neighbor, I'd definitely consider it.
Let us check on the backup alarms, and it's really hard to be able to know exactly, I mean, it sounds easy, but all the...
Yeah, that's what I said.
Different grades of wood and stuff, we decide, and in the middle of the night, they say, "We've got to get this ready for tomorrow." We can try, and we can, but I can't guarantee that it'll happen 100% of the time. So yes, we can work towards that, but there may be an occasional time that, "Oh, we got, we forgot, we messed up." So we can work on that.
The, the height of the cinder block wall is proposed to how high?
Six to seven, city code says six feet, I think we told P&amp;Z we'd do seven.
And how about the issue of the backfill, where you backfill, so it's only like three or four feet off the ground?
I don't know, I don't know anything about that.
When we talk six or seven feet, we're, we're expecting seven feet above ground.
Above ground on our side?
Code.
Okay, if that's city code, then we will comply.
Okay.
So that means that we may have to go on the block wall and add one or two layers?
Correct.
The existing section, right.
On that side, yes.
In the current development agreement, there's a couple of things that are kind of left open-ended, like, like the issue with the parking lot on 16th.
Yes.
I would like to see, you know, I understand your purpose on that, as well as the landscaping and, and interface along 16th at the entrance there, but I definitely would like to see an end date, just in case something doesn't work out, we can at least get, we're not left hanging out with these elements. Is there a practical ending that we can put in here, that if Tesoro decides not to, or the grants don't come through in developing 16th? I, I would like to see a definitive date on, on those being capped.
Okay, P&amp;Z asked me the same question, that's why I'm smiling. And I, you, you tell me, I mean, you know, as soon as we know that Tesoro is or is not going to happen, we'll move ahead, and their response was, "Well, you know, government's slow." So, I mean, if you guys want to commit to, that, that's what it comes, either we spend the money developing the Tesoro parking lot, or we spend the money developing our parking lot. It's what the city wants to commit to.
Well, we could certainly pin, I think, 16th down. We'll know basically what the grant cycle is well enough to say, August of this year, that it's got to be one way or the other. We'll know if it's, if it's in, I mean, how would we approach that in terms of the development agreement? The construction won't be done, but we'll know what we'll be doing on Pennsylvania from that standpoint. Can we word it such that if we identify that project, that set of projects not going to go through, then they have to go ahead and finish their, their landscaping and paving and all of that?
Let me ask Tracy. Tracy?
Yes.
In, in your plans for North Pennsylvania improvements, that went from 16th back to their entrance?
Well, there were two, there was the, the LCIP grant, and then there was the community block grant. The community block, block grant was, was going to be larger than the one that was a safety improvement, which was just the intersection, and it went down to tie into the existing sidewalk on 16th, I believe.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
And then, and then the other one was going to go around the corner, wasn't it, and come down on North Pennsylvania's ways?
Yes, we would like to be able to get it down towards the entrance. That was what we're, that was the bigger application.
And is that designed?
Is it designed?
You haven't designed that?
No, not at all, it's just varied, like 15%, just enough to get a cost estimate for the grant.
Okay, all right. So, I guess what I would say is, if, if the council was to commission a design on that part of North Pennsylvania, if there was a drop dead date, and Woodgrain needed to make some moves, at least, at least they'd know what the elevations and design is, so they're not wasting anything. See what I mean?
August would probably be very practical, because we'll have accomplished our budget workshop by then, and know whether or not we can fund the design on that, which will give you the, the interface on where you need to come to. So, I think that's, that's, if we pick something either August or September, or, or something like that, towards the end of this year, we could, that's probably fairly reasonable on, at least on that aspect.
Okay, and respectfully, in the development agreement, it does say, "If it is determined that there will be no additional finished spaces on the Tesoro property, Woodgrain will finish the parking lot."
I, I agree, I'd just like to see real dates and names.
So do I. Yeah, sure.
Sure.
Mayor, if I can address the council with regard to the noise. In chapter eight, the city code basically gives us a graph or a chart for residential, commercial, and industrial. It gives us an idea of how many decibels they can operate at any given time throughout the day, and we define some of those in commercial with the day, evening, and night. But for, specifically for industrial, there is no, it's all times, so it kind of leaves it open. It doesn't, it doesn't define when they can operate, oh, how loud, it's 80 decibels to 90 decibels, I believe, but they can operate that at all times throughout the day. So, with no limitations on that, I was referring back to under public nuisance and disturbance noises, and that's that subsection four, which is the shouting and whispering. So I think that council should address that, where noise is such an issue with our citizenry. Maybe we need to limit that a little bit, just throw that out there.
Could you maybe, could you help, I'm afraid?
Could you interpret that, though, that industrial is actually more stringent than commercial, because of the...
It's less...
I'm just asking.
Right, yeah, no, it is actually less stringent.
Very stupid.
Which, which is slightly off.
Well, it's a higher level of decimal that it can operate at.
But the development agreement could be consistent with what the commercial says, is what you're...
Correct, yes, you could use different, you could put, you know, limits on time, you could put a different limit on decibel, you have more flexibility within the development agreements, because you're bringing the property in, in order to set different limits than what you have specifically.
That's the whole point of a development agreement, things that don't necessarily are specific to the code.
Jerry?
Yes.
You, you had a letter to P&amp;Z that had a comment that I, I didn't quite see where you were going, and I didn't know if it's been addressed. It was, you, you said, "I would suggest commission consider requiring the east entrance to the proposed parking lot on Northwest 16th Street, along the west side of the railroad tracks, to be moved west to line up with the next drive aisle west, to the west, prevent interference from vehicles that may stack up at the railroad crossing." So you're just saying that where it's going in now is too close to the, to the railroad tracks?
Yeah, that, the existing driveway approach, in my opinion, is too close to railroad tracks, because of the cars that will stack up with the railroad tracks, but if you look at their parking lot layout, they've got two entrances and two drive aisles. There's a drive aisle to the west, is that correct? I don't have the...
And...
Yes.
Am I wrong? I think I missed something.
Are you talking about the gravel road, are you talking about an egress out of the parking lot?
Okay. So, so wait a minute. Now, those aren't actual curb cuts, though, right? You're not, you're not...
They're going to be.
So those will be actual curb cuts there?
On one second.
Into that parking lot off of 16th? I thought that was just two...
Hold on, one second, let me unroll here. We tentatively have an egress and an ingress, but I'm not, I'll say yes, that's the last version I got from the engineers.
If the development agreement...
Yeah, the development agreement, this postdates the development agreement where we thought that we were going to come in on that gravel road, and we were going to, we talked to the city, and they said, "We want it paved up to a certain point, so you're not bringing gravel out and tearing up the streets."
Oh, that's by the canal.
And that's, that's by the canal, yes.
Canal definitely won't let us pave it.
What's that? Oh, that's right, the canal company won't let us pave it. That's why we're not going to pave it, as per the development agreement. We talked to canal company, and they said...
On the canal piece, or on your piece?
On the canal.
Yeah, stay, just stay away from their piece and pave your part, piece.
Right.
So, right now, the last paragraph of, of section two in the, well, second-to-last paragraph of the development agreement, is employees will access this parking lot by using the existing ingress on 16th Street. We'll need to change that to the top of the...
Yep.
To different English.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So, and that's where you're talking about wanting to move this west, or easternmost one away from the railroad tracks?
Yes.
Okay.
The oil, or, what is it, the oil gravel road, you want to move it east, is that what we're saying?
No, so, on the parking lot itself...
I'm talking specifically about the parking lot.
Yes.
There's, there's those two...
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
The easternmost one there...
It's too close to the railroad tracks, fine. Yep, okay.
And we'll, we need to change that one paragraph to reflect these two.
Okay.
So there's 16, there's mine. So, the...
You have a second comment on there, Jerry?
I thought it was...
Oh, just about changing the language in the development agreement to reflect that we wouldn't need to move the sewer line immediately that's in that area?
Yeah, I, I don't see any economical or feasible reason to move that sewer line just to build a parking lot.
Would that be acceptable?
Yeah, we've come to terms with it.
Okay.
I think, I think we just figured, well, if we're going to pave it, we probably ought to move the sewer line, because that's to be moved eventually.
But, but a park, that's something would have to go through our budget process, because that'd be fair...
Yeah, I don't think that's going to be a problem, but I'll go back to our engineers. I think they, I think they recognize that it's probably not going to happen before we get everything done.
Okay, very good.
I don't think I have any more comments.
So, that's what the chief has recommendation about setting, discussion of setting, is that in the development agreement, is that something we're going to have to...
Build the language and put in there.
Yeah, yeah, before approving the development agreement.
Anything else from the council, any more questions today? Anything else you want to do? You want to close the hearing, you want to keep it open, what would you like to do?
We've got several things that we need to develop proper language for, this noise limited... This noise limit issue is a critical one, we need to get the, the language down on that so that it's effective, and is, is a workable solution to the whole situation. I don't know that we can accomplish some of these things right here tonight, that's, that would be my concern. Is that something we want to leave the, the hearing open, or close it and then do the, do this?
You would only need to leave the hearing open if there's additional evidence that you need to gather.
I think we're pretty much...
So you don't need additional evidence, you would close the hearing and then, and then still take the time to continue the decision while you go through some of these sort of things.
I think we've gathered quite the picture for the situation, so from that standpoint, I think the hearing is pretty well, well flushed out.
Okay. All right, anything else, David?
I'm good if you're good.
All right, we'll close this hearing at 9:06 and turn the meeting back over to the mayor.
Thank you, sir.
We take a 10-minute, please, sir.
Certainly.